Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the May 14th council meeting. We are glad to have you with us as we conduct the business of the city and of the citizens that reside here. So, we start every meeting the same way by asking God's blessings on these proceedings. So, I'd like to ask our pastor to come to the podium. And Ms., I shouldn't say this because it'll get back to my pastor, this is one of my favorite pastors. Ms. Jeanette from, she actually also serves you in the capacity of working with the Board of Elections Office here for the city of Columbus. Jeanette, welcome.
Thank you. Is this where I stand? Good morning. Thank you for this honor. Let us pray. Father God, I want to thank you for the day that we get to see, which we didn't know that we was gonna see. And at 12:01 a.m., this day will be gone. So, I ask that you order our steps today. Make us be more like you today. Father God, I want to bless the city council. They have a daunting task. Being responsible for this community, being responsible for this city is not easy. And I know a lot of folks are gonna disagree with them, but that's okay too, because we can't agree with everything that everybody says. But I know all of them personally, and I believe that they have the best interests of the city in their hearts. God, I ask this, and, I got nervous. God, in this prayer, in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. James. And please thank the Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church for sharing you with us today. All right, we'll now have our pledge of allegiance by some really pretty amazing young people from Puddle Jumpers. So, I'm gonna ask them to come up front. We'll give them the microphone, and if you would, please stand, and we'll recite the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Now, if you would, why don't you tell us your name and how old you are?
Uh, four.
You're four?
Uh, I'm four and I'm Preston Rosenkranz.
Okay. What's your name?
It's Ashmore and I'm four.
My name is Desolata Beldemine.
And my name is Michael.
And my name is Avery.
My name is Atasia.
My name is Lexi.
My name Mason.
My name is Gabriel.
My name's Hanina.
My name is Dylan.
My name is Cyrus.
My name's Alala.
My name is Hunter.
My name is Kate.
My name is Kinsey.
My name is Jackson Gordon.
And I'm Miss Ashley.
And I'm Miss Sophia.
Hi, I'm Amy Doolittle, and I'm the co-teacher for K4 at Puddle Jumpers.
And I'm Cory Baker.
Well, we are very grateful. You guys, give them another hand. They did such a good job. And I gotta say, this young gentleman on the end, I told him, "That's the neatest shirt I've ever seen." Says, "My aunt is cooler than pizza." I love it. Thank y'all for spending your morning with us. Thank you so much. No matter how good, no matter how good the rest of the meeting is, it's all downhill from there. All right, we have the minutes from April 30th that need to be approved. Got a motion, second, approve the minutes. Any edits, any conversation about it? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they passed. I'll hand it over to our city attorney.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Got a fairly short agenda today, couple of zoning hearings. First one up is property located at 6890 River Road. Current zoning is residential office, and this petition asks to change the conditions for residential condominiums. It's recommended for approval by Planning Advisory Commission and the Planning Department. The petitioner is here with Mr. Mize, and let's see if we got any questions around the table. You do? All right, Counselor Davis? Come on up, Mr. Mize.
Hit your button. All right, Counselor Davis?
Mr. Mize, thank you for being with us today, and I really appreciate you reaching out and spending some time with me to go over this matter. I wanted to ask you just to go ahead for the record, just read in the record. I know we talked about a lot of things, and I don't, I'm totally in support of the project, and I like what they're doing. I think it's gonna be a good addition to the area. When you look at use, overall use, or what could happen on this piece of property, I think it's a very good development. So, just for the sake of being consistent, and what's happening there from a development standpoint, I just would like it to be presented to council for the record's sake, because I think we have an understanding that what is being presented is gonna take place, and I'm all on board with that. If, by chance, something changes in the future, I think that we've agreed that it would come back to this council, and they'd have another opportunity to relook at it. This property is subject to conditions over the past, but I think in the requests that's being made, that it's totally fine from that standpoint. So, I say that in an effort that if any of us are not here, or Mr. Mize is not here, and this thing changes down the line, that at least the citizens would have an opportunity to hear any request, future request, again, on a totally different type of development that's requested by this council. Am I correct in stating?
Yes, you're correct.
All right.
Any other questions from counselors? All right, let's see if anybody's in the audience that wants to be heard on this. Anybody for or against this petition? Okay. Don't hear any Mr. Mize. We'll vote on that in two weeks at the regular meeting. Just stay tuned to the Clerk of Council for the time of that meeting, but it could change, I'm not sure. Thank you, sir. All right, next item up is the ordinance to amend the text of the Unified Development Ordinance. This is in regards to a special exception permission for health and fitness facilities in the historic district. It's recommended for approval by Planning Advisory and Planning Department. Mr. Jones, you wanna come around first and tell the folks listening that this is just proposing a text change in our ordinance. Any petition for special exception would have to come back to this council on a case-by-case basis if this were to pass.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Point of clarification here first, this is really not actually the Planning Department's application. This was made by the applicant who was looking for, if you may recall, some relief in dealing with the building they were located in in terms of River Valley, in terms of sharing that. Having said that, though, we are here to present to you what we've asked, because, as you may recall, there's a long history involved with this. We outlined that in our staff report to you about how we got to this point. There's a long history here, though, in terms of, we started back about the middle of last year, in terms of going in, basically with the building agreement, just to do some alteration work. From that, it came back to a CO where they wanted to go in with a health and fitness center into that building, which we didn't allow. They came back, they came to this council in December of last year, requested some relief. Council at that time directed the Planning Department to go back and look at what could be done, what could be achieved. And we presented to you that time the idea of lease for doing this as a special exception. There was some concern about that, just going with it from that standpoint. We went back again, actually had a public meeting on this subject, brought the neighbors in to hear some of their concerns and needs and so forth. We modified that request to, this time now, to basically say that if you're gonna be a health and fitness center under a special exception, you've got to be leased, occupy in a building, existing building, at least 15,000 square feet. They gotta be, it's gotta be a facility built, the building itself was built before 2019 on that, then they got to meet parking requirements and so forth that involved with all that. And in turn, we also provide you information in the staff report of what buildings actually meet that criteria today. These are 800 Front Avenue, 18th, 18th, 9th Street, 710 Front Avenue, 627 Second Avenue, 543 Third Avenue, 222 Fifth Street, and five, excuse me, 425 Third Avenue. Those are the ones that do, could possibly meet that criteria under this proposal here. And then we also went in there to list out to you some pros and cons in terms of doing this measure, in terms of actually amending the existing Unified Development Ordinance. I'm sorry.
Just a second, Counselor Thomas.
Would you go back to the list of properties? Can you give us some idea of what currently are in those buildings?
Do we have a map here, Will? We can share?
I saw the map, but...
I think it's helpful, Counselor Thomas, we can show that to you. And you have it in here? Where we hide it? I'll let you find it. Don't we have the actual map and show it? Yeah. Let's pull that out and show it, put it on the overhead. I think it's important that we share with you where these locations are.
Yes, sir. Number one is the Marriott up there in the top left. Number two is Heritage Tower across from the Government Center. Number three is the River Valley. Number four is the school that Cia Etamadi owns.
I'm sorry, it's what?
The school, the old school building that Cia Etamadi owns. Number five is Fourth Street Towers Apartments. Number six is Fourth Street Baptist Church. And number seven is Columbus Homes Holdings LLC, which I think are the apartments that the church controls.
Thank you.
Again, also, as we identified here in the staff report, we laid out to you what we consider to be the pros and cons in terms of doing this, because there has been a lot of conversation going on back and forth about doing this amendment to the UDO itself. The special exception allows us to control it from the sense of dealing with anything like access and parking, pedestrian safety, accuracy of public facilities, hours of operation, those kind of things we can administer to under a special exception use. We'd be required, as we just said, that the use would have to be in an existing building that is a minimum of 15,000 square feet, up from that. Unless, granted, a variance on parking requirements will still have to be met, and that we need to let, remind you again, that under the 2038 comprehensive plan, this area is called for mixed-use development neighborhood. There are some cons involved with all this as well, though. This amendment, in doing so, we need to go in with eyes wide open, with the understanding that there will be some limitations on parking, because there are limitation constraints now on parking in the historic district itself, from that standpoint. And to keep in mind also, while we're not talking about a particular case here this morning, we are going with the understanding that parking is also controlled pretty much by the city of Columbus in this general area. The area that is just to the north of the River Valley Regional Commission offices is actually owned and operated by the city of Columbus, and it is well utilized today. As I explained earlier to Counselor Walker coming up this morning, last Friday, I believe it was Columbus Tech, had their graduation at the Trade Center, and that parking lot was full. It was utilized for that purpose, for overflow parking from the Trade Center itself. And I keep in mind also that there also may be other opportunities in the future that may require the use of that property for other things. Just keep that in mind as well. Any variances that are actually given for parking would not come back necessarily to this board, to this council, but rather goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, you're relinquishing some of that authority back to the Board of Zoning Appeals in that regard. And we probably, in the long run, if we continue with this, we'll probably need to go back and refine what really constitutes a health and fitness use, not only in this district but throughout the community as a whole, because those kind of uses have changed over time. This is pretty much the gist of what we're trying to achieve here, and what we tried to lay out before you. Again, as the city attorney has stated earlier today, the conversation really needs to be focused primarily on the idea of, do you reckon you want to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to allow this particular type of use? The actual application itself has not come forward for any type of this, and won't come forward until this amendment is actually approved. If it gets denied, then of course, nothing happens to the application itself. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to conclude my remarks and answer any questions if I can.
Counselor Thomas, may I have a question?
Counselor... I just want to be real clear, Mr. Jones. The requirement of 15,000 square feet is for the entire building. So, for example, Heritage Tower on 9th Street, that entire building is 15,000 or more square feet, but the facility that would be going in there under this ordinance, I've tried to find if there's any regulation on the size of that facility.
There is not. What we looked at was the entire building itself. If you wanted to go in there and break that building up into individual spaces, you could certainly do so, but the building itself is what we look at for the entire, it's gotta be a building of at least 15,000 square feet to meet this criteria. If you want, again, Heritage Tower, if you go in there, and it's just, I don't, I can't call the size of it offhand, but if it is 15,000 square feet or greater, and you want to go in there and put another use in that building, you certainly could do so, but the building in its entirety has to be at least 15,000 square feet.
And currently, for example, again, the Heritage Tower, as I recall, are mostly offices, right? Business offices or law offices or something.
Right.
And so, this would be something that could take that type space, office-type space. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. There are no other questions around the table. We'll ask folks in the audience that want to be heard to raise your hand. If you've got a spokesperson, that'd be fine if you want to come on up. Ma'am, come on up and give your name and address. You can go over there, ma'am, to that podium.
My name is Geraldine Plummer, and I was up here around the Government Center, and I heard some man saying that they were gonna be getting rid of a lot of these houses, and they've already got 200 that they need to get rid of. Well, I have had a client taken from me. Oh, I'm sorry. I said that they had already had 200 on the list, and I have had...
Ma'am, is this to the UDO change? Are you speaking about the UDO change?
I don't know what you're talking about.
If you would, if you would wait until we get through this, because the legal proceedings require that we allow the public to speak on this hearing. So, we'll come back to you, but...
I'm speaking.
Ma'am?
I said, "Well, I'm speaking on it." And I'm the public.
Okay, if you're speaking, I'm sorry, I thought I asked you if you were speaking on it. You told me no.
On what?
On the UDO text change that we're discussing right now.
For the historic district?
Yes, different than what you want to speak of all. That's all I... Well, I have, I had a house there in the, in that district that you're talking about, and I fixed it up. I had to go to the hospital, and I fixed it up, and I talked to the people about it after I had fixed it up, and they said it was okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then when I came back, they had taken it and want to...
Yes, ma'am, I'm afraid that's a separate issue, and we have to finish this one. We'll come back to you.
Oh, I thought that's what you were talking about.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. This is particularly about the text change to allow a special exception within the historic district.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am, but we'll come back to you. I apologize. We should have made it clearer. Thank you.
All right, I saw Mr. Smallman's hand. If you want to come up, give him your name.
The only thing that we would ask, whether you're for or against this particular text change, if you just, we want to hear from everybody, but just try not to be repetitive or redundant so that we hear all of the issues.
Thank you. I'm Ernie Smallman, 6th, 7th Street. Just briefly, want to speak in favor of the text amendment. Allowing a special exception, to me, allows everybody the maximum amount of control and the maximum amount of flexibility when we're deciding how to use property, whether it's, you know, allowed or something we're changing to be allowed. Leaving it where it has to come back and go through the process, I think protects everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I see another hand in the back. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I appreciate your time today to address you about this text amendment to the UDO in the historic district. I write much better than I speak extemporaneously, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna just read some thoughts that I had about this subject. My husband and I live at 738 Broadway. He would certainly be here today because he feels his idea about this issue.
Tell them who you are, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fran Carpenter, 738 Broadway. One of us has to go to work, so I lost the coin toss and he went to work. We also recently purchased a house on 6th Street. That house had been used as a rental property for many years and is in very bad condition. I couldn't stand the trash on the lawn any longer, so I called the owner and asked if he would sell it to me, and he did. Now, of course, I feel like the dog that caught the car because I have to renovate this terrible property, but I do have plans to renovate it, depending a lot on what happens here today and in the next two weeks. This house on 6th Street originally belonged to my father's Aunt Thelma. By all accounts, she was a piece of work. She ran the Broadway Grill, and she lived in that house until the day she died. My father grew up around the corner from there, on 5, at 541 Broadway. I still have the telegram that was sent to that address informing my grandparents that my dad had been wounded in Germany in World War II. Dad's grandparents lived in the 600 block of Broadway. When we were kids, my dad would often bring us down to Lower Broad, as he called it, and show us the house he grew up in, and the houses that his friends lived in, and the houses where he threw papers to try to earn money to buy a bicycle so that he could ride it to Jordan High School. Even back in the day, before downtown was uptown, I loved the old houses, and I always wanted to live in a historic home. When my husband and I married and I moved back from Atlanta, we lived in Midland. It took me four years to convince him to give up 68 acres and a quarter of a mile drive through the woods to move to the historic district, but he moved. Now, we live where we can walk out on our front porch and smell what our next-door neighbor's having for dinner, but we love the neighborhood. We have loved it for the last four years and have tried to contribute to its health and vitality in our own small way. I appreciate what you're saying about focusing on the UDO. However, the majority of the staff report focused on, presented to council by the Planning Department, focuses on the situation at 710 Front Avenue. This is a big part of my concern. Absent that business, operating in that location, we would not be here dealing with this issue today. When we've raised issues such as the building not having enough parking for the special exception, we're told it isn't about that building or that business. But when we ask about general issues with the UDO, such as the sale and serving of alcohol, the Planning Advisory Commission wants to know from the business owner whether it would be a problem for her to exclude that. On the Planning Department's own application, the instructions say, "A request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance should be based upon the comprehensive plan and must have sound reasons that indicate why the current zoning should be changed. It is up to the applicant to make the case for the change." In answer to that responsibility, the actual application on file says nothing, and the Planning Department staff report says only that the neighborhood is mixed use. Our neighborhood abuts a business district, and that is where businesses should be. There are numerous health and fitness facilities already operating in the business district. Our actual neighborhood is less mixed use today than it has been in decades. Law offices and other businesses are finding that their property is more valuable as residential real estate and so expensive to maintain that they're selling and moving. Those businesses are being changed from shabby law offices back into beautiful residential homes. On page 112 of the 2038 Comprehensive Plan, it reads, "The Columbus Downtown Historic District is primarily a residential area that also includes churches, stores, and offices. Under implementation measures," it says, "we should take steps to actively preserve homes and other structures, particularly in the southern areas of the district. We should enforce property maintenance codes and historic preservation guidelines. We should maintain public facilities in public right-of-way, including street lighting, sidewalks, benches, and curbs. And we should discourage non-residential encroachment that does not support the scale, size, or character of the area." Parking is a real hot-button issue for us down here, as it is in other historic neighborhoods like Inman Park and Kandler Park in Atlanta. I feel that we should learn from their mistakes. Businesses bring more cars, and these neighborhoods afford very little off-street parking. The businesses that currently exist in our neighborhood create lots of parking issues. Cars lining both sides of the streets create a safety hazard for pedestrians and for drivers, and make it difficult for fire trucks and ambulances and other public safety vehicles to navigate our streets. Much is being said these days about a live-work-play environment, yet many of the people who have spoken in favor of this text amendment come from outside the neighborhood. Some have said, "If the gym isn't in that building, what would you have them do with the building?" There are some accepted uses available in the UDO. There was a tenant in that building, and I assume that it was allowed under the UDO. If RVRC needed a tenant in that building, it is difficult to understand why they didn't seek one that was suitable under the current UDO, especially given that zoning and planning is a large part of their function. I understand the challenge of the building, even more now that we understand the parking challenges and that there isn't adequate parking for the two businesses. But we've been told from the very beginning that there are enough votes to pass this, so we feel that it's sort of being rammed down our throats. If it only affected that one building, as we were originally told when the issue first arose, we could probably live with it. Unfortunately, a change to the UDO opens the neighborhood up to other business encroachment. I hope that you can understand why I'm so frustrated. Personally, I have lost confidence in the process. Personally, I have lost confidence in the process. I feel that my rights as a homeowner are being abridged by the rights of a business owner who has failed to follow the proper process in opening her business, a process which all business owners must follow when opening a business in a new location. In closing, I just want to reiterate that nothing in the planning department instructions or on the Planning Advisory Commission instructions, nothing says that it is incumbent upon me or any of my neighbors to explain why you should not make this change to the UDO. The UDO is already enforceable code. You or your predecessors already voted on it. The Planning Department instructions for changing code read, "A request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance should be based upon the comprehensive plan and must have sound reasons that indicate why the current zoning should be changed. It is up the, up to the applicant to make the case for the change." I would appreciate it if you would just enforce the law as it is on the books. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carbon.
All right. Anybody else in the neighborhood want to come up? All right. Don't see any other. Well, come on up. Give me your name and address, please.
Good morning. I'm Dorothy McDaniel, and I am at 2007 Forest Avenue. I sent y'all an email last week, but this is actually more just a clarification. I actually go to the, to the gym, so I use the gym. I would say five days a week regularly, sometimes six days. And sometimes I'm there at 8:30, sometimes I'm there at noon, sometimes I'm there at 4:30. Depends on my schedule. So with the exception of Christmas in the South, and I still found a parking place, but the, with the exception of the Christmas in the South, that lot is, I would say, a third occupied. It's a, so just, this is just from listening, you know, my, my thoughts on, on the experience of parking there. As someone who's there five or six days a week, I have never had trouble finding a parking spot. I mean, sometimes there are five cars in the lot. Just, I don't want there to be a perception that there is a current parking issue for folks using that facility. I've never had a problem, I mean, not even half occupied. Like I say, the only time I ever had to search for a spot was Christmas in the South. That's also when I realized that the vendors for Christmas in the South are actually from Michigan and Ohio, but it's still a fun event. So anyway, I just wanted to give a little bit of clarity from the experience of being there for the past several months and, and actually parking, so. But thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I hope you got the letter from my daughter because she worked hard on it, so.
She did a good job on it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else on this topic? Just this topic today, the UDO amendment. All right, we'll vote on that in two weeks then, Mayor. 5:30 is scheduled now, but that's subject to change.
Okay. And if there are comments that you wish still to get in front of your counselors, you, you can still do that before they vote, before they vote in two weeks.
Right. Any other comments can be submitted to the clerk of council at any time, up to the vote. We have a couple more items, Mayor.
I'll check, ma'am. We'll call you in just a few moments. Yes, ma'am.
Next one is a resolution that would exempt three nonprofit entities from 50% of inert waste fees set forth in Chapter 13 of the code. This is ready for adoption. They would only have to pay half price. These three entities, Goodwill Industries, Valley Rescue, and Salvation Army, would be exempt from half of the fee for inert waste and other non-putrescible waste.
And to clarify, Mayor Protem is not here, but I can give you the reasoning behind this, this, this resolution. Apparently, you know, Goodwill and Valley Rescue, they have these collection bins where people can drop off household goods, and it's for the charitable organization so that they can resell them and then, then serve the, really the underserved in this community. What has happened over the last six to eight months is people are using it as a trash bin. They don't want to put their old broken furniture out in front of their house, so they ride by at night and they dump it down here. Well, what they're doing is basically what we would be doing. They're taking this stuff to the dump. And their, their, their expenses on the tipping fees have gone up 100% over the last year and a half. And the Mayor Protem and I talked, and I, I fully support this. These particular entities are providing a service within this community. And it is getting harder and harder for them to do that. We're not going to give it away free, but we did want to make sure that they understood that, that they would be paying 50 cents on the dollar for the tipping fees. Counsel Barnes?
And I appreciate you mentioning that, Mr. Mayor, because you and I have had conversations. They, in essence, are really saving us, really. I mean, because a lot of people are using them as dumping sites. So I'm really glad that we're giving them some consideration in this matter. And plus, on top of that, when you look on the other side, how much they do on the other end for a lot of the citizens in this community that, for want of a better term, that the good Lord has stepped into our individual lives and blessed us.
Okay. Counsel Thomas?
Ms. Mayor, is it, is it right for me to assume that these three entities are the only nonprofits that regularly do this in Columbus?
Yes, ma'am. And that's why, actually, this request came really at the end of last year. And they've been anxious to try to get it accomplished. But we did take our time to try to make sure that we weren't opening a Pandora's Box, or we weren't omitting anybody that also does the same function. So, yeah, the city attorney's office and the city manager's office have worked to identify through parks, public works, the only ones that we, we can find that would be impacted.
And by listing these in the resolution, if another nonprofit comes to town and, and meets the same criteria, will we need another resolution or?
We could just amend the resolution.
Amend this resolution? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still kind of working through this because it, you know, what we're talking about here is a direct cost. It's a direct cost, nonprofit or, or for-profit. Either way, it's a direct cost, and it's deferred in this case if you're discounting the rate at the landfill, which has to be serviced. I mean, there's no way around it. It's, it's a cost, and it's going to be serviced, and we deal with that every day. But if it's deferred, somebody's got to pay that cost. It just doesn't go away. So, you know, I'm, I'm still, like I said, I'm still working through it. You know, I would ask the question, wonder if everything stayed the same, and what was, has anybody looked at a variance of the cost of just going to these entities and picking up with our trucks and just picking up the waste and taking it to landfill? And there's still a cost associated with it. I don't know if that would be a better way to do it versus just giving a 50% discount. But that cost doesn't just go away. You may be helping an organization, but somebody else is going to pick up that cost because it's a direct cost. And it's going to come, most likely, in the form of an increase in integrated waste fee, which all the citizens are going to have to pay. But that's just a, there's no way around it dealing with the landfill. Somebody's got to carry that cost because it's, stuff is going there every day. Doesn't matter where it's coming from, but it's going there every day. So I, you know, like I said, I'm still working through it. And I, you know, I'm not sure if there'll be other requests along the way associated with it, but that's just food for thought.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, did you have some comments?
Ms. Mayor, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that we've had the conversation, and it makes sense to me, when I had the conversation with the mayor, that we would do something like this. I did have staff to pull the total tipping fees paid by these organizations, the ones named. And, and it's, it's not a significant cost. It's 15,000 is what she's telling me for those named. And so 50%, they would pay, obviously, around $7,500 for those named. And, and so it makes sense to me because, I mean, I just had a conversation with Counselor Thomas just yesterday about a location where people have gone to the parking lot of a shopping center. And they have dumped at the shopping center, much like they dump at these donation centers of the ones named. And, and so I'm trying to figure out what Counselor Thomas talked to me about yesterday. And I can tell you, another dumping site is Fair Oaks Drive. When I drive through there and furniture is out there, and you drive through Fair Oaks. And so if they don't, they're dumping at these three locations, and if they don't do it there, they're going to do it on Fair Oaks Drive and other streets like Fair Oaks Drive. And, I mean, tires and furniture drove through Fair Oaks, and there was a couch. And so they are taking this junk to these locations. And so if we go by those locations and pick it up as a courtesy, it's going to cost us time and money and more than the 50%. And so, much like we did with the trees on the north side, I, we, we wanted to allow them to go directly to the landfill rather than bring it to the curb and dump it, and then we got to go and get it and take it to the landfill. I mean, that's, since they have it on their truck, just take it onto the landfill, and that way Public Works won't have to go. So, I mean, I see this a similar kind of situation, and, and I further think that, you know, rather than coming back to council for every time, it, much like you do in other resolutions or ordinances, you allow the engineer to have that discretion or the city manager to have that discretion. If there's one that needs to be added, after scrutiny, we could add it and then tell you about it. And that way, we don't have to keep changing the resolution or the ordinance. So those are my thoughts. I, I support it. I, I had the conversation with the mayor, and I think we're going to do it.
Counselor Davis? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, turn it on.
No, are, are we currently going by these entities? Are we currently going by there? I'm assuming that they take it to a central location and then it's hauled to the, to the dump. I don't think they're going to every little box that's out in the community and taking it right to the landfill. I may be wrong, but-
Yeah, I, I think-
I think it goes to a central location, I would think.
I, I would think that you're right. I, I, because I, I think, I would think that the driver of the truck would not have the authority to make the decision as to whether it's junk or not. And they would just haul everything. That's my assumption. They would take it all back.
Yeah, they, they do. They, they bring it all into the, the main, main area, and then you've got, you go by there, and there's typically a rotation of stuff out there that's just-
Well, we, I guess my question would be, are we going by these places and picking up some type of wreckage?
No, no, I think they are taking, that's why they have tipping fees, because they take their stuff to the landfill.
Well, and what you're telling me, I mean, it's a small amount of money. I would think that, that it's probably better to do it that way because of the off setting of cost. I'm, I'm not sure how much it would cost our trucks to go and pick this up from a central location and take it, but I'm assuming it's probably less, or excuse me, more.
Yeah, it's, and I think, I think the money for this current year is a little bit more than the 7,500, but it, it is not a huge, huge sum. And I think that the challenge is, they, they sort through, and what they can salvage, they salvage for their, for their mission. And, and I think that it would take a, a little bit of time for us to send a truck out there to load this stuff up, because it's, there's a bunch of junk, I guess.
Well, and, and Ms. Mayor, I just, I don't want to divert a truck to these locations. I want them to take it to the landfill.
It's probably a little more efficient.
I wanted to hear your comments, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. We've got a question.
This is a proposal, second.
All right. A motion, second, to approve. Any discussion, any further discussion? If you could cue the vote.
So, Ms. Mayor, you want us to come back with every additional request?
It says in the ordinance that it's, any exemption shall be by resolution, so we could just amend this whenever we need to.
If we, I, I don't think we'll be inundated with other requests. I don't think there are many others, if any, that, that qualify into that. So we can do that as a, on a case-by-case basis. If we do get more requests, then we'll revisit it. All right? And that, that passes.
Mayor, we will need a-
Wait, wait, wait.
Do what?
Gary Sahidem Oregon, sir.
My books were laying on top of the desk.
Okay.
I was trying to move it to get there.
If we could get the clerk to please record Counsel Allen's vote as a, as a yes. Counsel Barnes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, okay?
Button issues.
That's fine. If that's as bad as the day gets, we're in good shape.
There you go, there you go.
All right. Mr. City Attorney?
We need an executive session at the end of the business meeting.
Okay, we'll need an executive session after the meeting.
On a personnel matter, but now Counselor Allen, I think, wants to make a comment on a draft that's come around the table for information.
Okay. And I wanted to mention too, excuse me, I wanted to make a mention too, I don't think Counselor Davis's vote was recorded in the last vote either. So we're still having, you vote in affirmative?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think we finally got that squared away. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. The Take Home Car Committee would like to report to council that we passed out a draft that, for you to peruse at your leisure. Just wanted to cover a couple of points. First of all, let me thank Counsel Woodson, Counsel Thomas, and Counsel House for working with me on the committee and, and their dedication to this. I'd also like to thank the mayor and the city manager for their support in helping us get through this. We also invited John Redman, the city auditor, to join our committee, and he was invaluable in his support and input. And the first thing we did was we brought Drell Short in to, from the fleet management side, so we could become educated on how much the city does in maintenance and upkeep and that kind of thing. And she was such a valuable asset, we asked her to join us on every meeting. So she, the city manager, she was just a trooper and stayed right there with us in every meeting, provided valuable support and guidance. I also like to thank Clifton Fay and Lucy, City Attorney's Office, for their guidance on many of the issues that we talked about. Jeremy Miles, NIT, was, was right there with us anytime we needed anything, so I'd like to acknowledge his support as well. I'd like to thank all the department heads for meeting with us over the last six months. This has been a labor and love for everyone. Where, where we are today is, when we dug into this, we were looking at expanding the boundaries for the take-home car, those that drive take-home cars. And as we began to talk through the issues, we, we found that our scope was getting wider and wider. We took on the, not only the take-home car policy as we have, we've talked about the car allowance versus mileage, we talked about the maintenance and upkeep of this. And what you have in the draft will address technology. So also, technology has been identified, and it, it will assist in a variety of areas, from GPS to maintenance of the car. So we'd like to begin the discussion of that with you in the next couple of weeks. We are working to finalize the cost to extend the driving privileges to adjacent counties. So we want to begin a dialogue with you on those, of those issues as well. So we'll come back in two weeks and, and pick this up and dig into it a little deeper with the full council. But if you have any questions in the meantime, feel free to call me or any of the other counselors on the committee.
Don't forget to mention about our campaign.
Yeah, the, the one issue that came out of this was, and we have several, we have about 60-plus city employees, mainly in the public safety arena. city employees, mainly in the public safety arena, who live in Alabama. Alabama's state laws are different than Georgia, so when you, when we drive into Alabama with a city car, we lose our sovereign immunity. So that issue, we, talking about addressing that issue as well, that's part of the broadening of our scope that I was indicated earlier, was we've, we've got some plans to address that issue and we'll be discussing that in more detail at the next meeting.
Counselor Allen, thank you and the other councils on the committee for taking a look at it. We appreciate it and we'll look forward to the report. All right, we did have, is that all, Ms. City Attorney?
Yeah, other than the executive session, that's all we had listed.
And we did have a request of the city manager to bring up a short update from his agenda. Before we move forward, we've got the judge and the jury manager here.
Ms. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have our finance director, Angelica Alexander, to introduce the subject. And the chief judge is here, Judge McBride, Gil McBride, and Sonya Kibble, the new jury manager. And so, finance director, Angelica Alexander.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Pursuant to ordinance 13-39, which says that departments that are trending to go over their budgeted appropriations must come before this council and ask for additional appropriations. And so that's why we're here today as far as the jury manager's office is concerned. The request is for an additional $60,000 for FY19. This would cover the remaining two months for the petty jury fees, contractual services, some other copier charges, as well as the vacation payout. As Mr. City Manager mentioned, Sonya Kibble is our new jury manager. Former jury manager retired at the end of April and so she had vacation that needed to be paid out, and so that is incorporated in this request.
How much is it?
$60,000.
Okay, and Judge, if you want to make any, come in.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Ms. Alexander. The former jury manager didn't, did not just retire, she retired after 42 years of service to the city. And she did have, I think, some leave that was paid out. I think some of you may have been, or all of you actually, were invited to her retirement reception late April, so this is very much a one-time extraordinary item. This is not something that needs to be budgeted for year after year. Also, as we continue to whittle down a backlog of serious cases over at the jail, that is murder cases, I think we're going to need to anticipate a higher level of trial jury funding. I think last year, what was it, about $18,000 that was added to the budget? And so, the last time I checked in with the sheriff, we were staying at around 70 cases, murder cases. Virtually all of those are going to try. Every now and then, someone will plead for a variety of reasons, but the sentencing options on those are so limited, it's usually either a life sentence or life without parole. You get very few inmates who are interested in entering guilty pleas to that type of sentence. And so, those cases do need to try, and I think I've tried two so far this year, and I know that our other judges are moving forward with those as well. So those, those cases alone are gonna be carrying an impact and putting some weight on the jury manager's budget for the foreseeable future. The retirement, however, and the leave is a one-time, non-recurring, extraordinary-type charge.
Counselor Davis?
Judge McBride, what I hear you saying is that, basically, you used the word extraordinary, I guess these high-profile type cases and all, but I guess what I hear you saying is that normally these cases have averaged out about the same over time, the caseloads as far as they're going, but last year or so was a unique year under the circumstances and therefore it demanded more, I guess you would have more need for long-term juries.
Well, it was, it was unique, it was unique in terms of the jury manager leave situation, because you don't have someone retire after that much service and that much built-up leave very often. But what I do think is going to be the new normal, at least for a while, is stepped-up costs to this office for juries. And I mentioned that the murder cases do generally try. Every now and then, someone does plead, but that's, that's not the norm. And also, those cases are very hard to try in less than a week, following up on what you were saying. Those cases tend to be longer. We've had them, I know in the last year, we've had a couple that have gone three weeks, three and a half weeks.
Outside those cases you're referring to, we're talking about that the caseloads have been consistently averaging about, about equal or the same as past years.
Absolutely, right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Move approval request.
Motion second to approve, all in favor, please say aye. Any votes?
And I do want to introduce our new jury manager. I think she's no stranger, she's, she's been a part of that office for 20, 26 years. And so, it was very natural that she would move, Ms. Coram. We're delighted to have her, feel fortunate to have her as the jury manager for this council, Sonya Kibble.
We're welcome. Congratulations, Sonya.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We finished?
We finished, sir.
Thank you.
Unless you have any more remarks. All right, we'll move on to the public agenda. And I appreciate your patience and indulgence for letting us do that real quick. First is Mr. Dwight Calhoun, representing Columbus Mentors Group. Mr. Calhoun, you'll, you'll be given five minutes and you'll start seeing a warning light so that you'll know when to begin to wrap up. And if you do not finish, and if you have something you'd like to continue to convey to us, you can come back at the end of the meeting, which shouldn't be actually too long. So start with your name and your address, please, sir.
Good morning, counsel. Good morning, Mayor. I'm Dwight Calhoun with CMC, that's the Columbus Mentors Consortium. And what that is, is a group of mentors here locally, myself, Dr. Forte, Pop Barnes, and Keith Mitchell. And what we're attempting to do is bring together local organizations that are dealing with boys, young boys. And our concern was, we have a lot of individual successes, a lot of organizations in the city, we want to bring those organizations to one table and for us to put all our resources on the table to address the needs of these young black men. Now, we're not gonna revamp going down the prison to the pipeline, everybody knows that's a problem, but we're, we're talking about, how do we solve the issues? We're talking about bringing the mayor in, crime prevention programs, 100 Black Men, YMCA, anybody dealing with youth, even the local library. So that's what we want to do. If you have a moment, I'm just gonna kind of give you our mission and our purpose. The purpose of this gathering is to discuss the creation of synergy. That's for all of us to sit around, bring together our resources, put it on the table, for us to be on one accord. We want to leave our egos at the door, because sometimes, you know, men especially, we have a lot of egos, and we want to put that aside to deal with the local issue. Now, this group is, right now, presently, just here in the Columbus area. One of our areas of focus is to enhance communication, because a lot of times we have different events that are going on in the city, excuse me. And, but we want to ring the bell to the local community, say, okay, 100 Black Men are having an event. We want to show up en masse, because we feel like if we can show these young boys, it's just not me that is caring about what you're doing. Here's a hundred organizations, a hundred men with money in their pocket, ready to support what you're doing. That's what we're about. So now we're in the process of creating a roster, a communication line, a email list that we can communicate with local organizations. This is what is going on. I saw you at the MLK parade and the event. That place should have been packed. And we feel like if we actually go into the streets and see people face-to-face, not just, let's put it on CCTV, that's fine. But when our young boys see us out in the community face-to-face, I'm not scared. Like my three-year-old said before I whipped him, I'm not scared. So we're about, put our bootstraps on, go to the local community, see these young boys face-to-face, all they want is a hug. When I do workshops, the first thing I say, I understand your pain, I know you're hurting. So we want to meet you right there, because unless they fully understand that you know what they're, the pain is coming from, then they're open to it. So this is what the Columbus mentoring program is about. Also, we want to go to the local schools, the high schools. If these young boys, or young men, or people in the community need volunteer hours, because what we find out is that your peers have more impact on you than your parents, the preacher, and anybody in our local community. So we want to take some of these young volunteers and let them talk to their peers. We feel that, that a way we'll have the maximum amount of impact. Last thing, we want to eliminate the gaps. And by that, I mean, if, if, if your organization is doing something, we want to send that young man at age three, four, or five to your organization. We want to hand-deliver those kids. We don't want to lose nobody in the gaps. We don't want to say, well, we lost this kid because he was tardy after school. No, if you have a, a program, a crime prevention program, we want to hand-deliver those kids there. So pretty much that's it, I'm gonna let Brother Forte just kind of express, I know I'm a little hyper, I'm a little.
No, man, it's good.
I'm really passionate about what I do. I've been working with children for 30 years. I know I look 30, but I've been working with children for 30. But go ahead, Brother Forte.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Pretty much Dwight summed it up quite well. So this is an opportunity for us to come together as a community and to provide a conduit communication between the mentoring groups that are operating within the Columbus community. As you said, the, the main, the main objective is to basically create communication between the mentoring groups, so that, for instance, I work in the school system, and I, and I can tell you without a doubt that we need mentoring in the school system. Okay, that's my one. I can tell without a doubt that we need mentoring in the school system. So let's say, for instance, if we have a master list of maybe this group that specializes in mentoring to young, young ladies. So then, we can pull from that master list and as a principal, I can call this group and say, I would like to invite you into my school, because I found out about you all through this. In other words, there's too much, it's scattered, so we're trying basically to decrease that. And so, you know, there was a pulling on our heartstrings to do this, and we want to thank Pop Barnes for his guidance and his support in doing this. And so we just want to come before this board and just express that and just communicate to you all what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do.
Mr. Calhoun, Dr. Forte, we're on board, whatever we can do. We agree with you that one of the biggest challenges is communicating and connecting all these different organizations that are doing a good job. I know your time is up, and I know we could talk all day, but I did want to recognize Counselor Barnes, he, he want to make a comment.
Glad you mentioned the mayor's appearance. Your appearance at the MLK and some of the things that you said, there was a group out of Atlanta that, that two weeks ago came down from Atlanta, our ex-councilman Bozeman, had let us make man. Because the reality of the situation, Mr. Mayor, is that we are losing two, possibly three generations of African-American males, and it's time for individuals to step up to the plate. So that's why we're very inclusive. Synergy is the word. Every organization's, Mr. City Manager, you're a part of 100 Black Men, we welcome you to be a part. We're gonna put out when our next meetings. No turf wars, it's not about me, it's about the youngsters. And so, I'd like to thank Dwight for initiating this and along with Dr. Forte and Mr. Keith Mitchell. And we're, we're in it to win it. We're not gonna stop, we're gonna be present, we're gonna be open arms for all organizations. And in the interest of times, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, counsel.
Counselor Thomas?
Okay. Well, thank you for what you do. Listen, I tell you, this community, one of the things that makes this community so amazing is that we have people willing to fill the gaps and try to make a difference in their neighborhoods and across this, across this county, so thank you, gentlemen.
Next up, Ms. Annie Marie Lee, regarding an accident.
My name is Annie Marie Lee, and I live at 545 Third Avenue. And I had left a packet at your mailbox this last Wednesday, I don't know if you had a chance to look at those. But it gave a letter detailing the accident with photos, the police report, the information from State Farm. I was headed down the hill on Moss Drive, and in the shaded area at the very bottom of the hill, asphalt had been dumped in the middle of the lane. And on the other side of the road, they had been working on the sewer for over a couple of weeks. So I had started to go around in anticipation of the work that was on the other side. And I ended up hitting the asphalt and the, my car went up sideways, I came to a stop, I got out, looked at my vehicle, picked up the parts, no one was there, so I went to my home, I called the city and I called 911 to send an officer for a police report. The city sent an employee to come to my house, they took a report from me, took some photographs, gave me a card of Ms. Ray, Ms. Sherry in your risk management office. And they told me to wait and call her 48 hours, which I did. When I called her, she didn't know anything about it and asked me to give her a couple of more days. So I waited three more days and she asked me to please give her some more time, she hadn't been able to finish the investigation. When I called back, she told me that I wasn't gonna like her response, but that to let my insurance company haggle it out with the city. So at that point, I told the H&amp;M Auto to go ahead and fix my car and that my insurance would cover the damages. So it was in the shop for a couple of weeks. I got it out and I had written a letter to each of you, and then I just decided kind of to sit back and wait. Well, also, at the date of the accident, not really knowing what to do, I called a mentor, my deacon from my church, to come to me after the accident to take a look and tell me if my car was drivable. I got a letter from State Farm after that telling me that they was gonna charge me a surcharge of $2,029 over six months. The police report states that the employee said they had dumped the asphalt in the, on the wrong road and that they did not put any barrels up to let you know of it. And I just, you know, I was appealing to the city council, the decision of risk management, asking that State Farm be reimbursed for the damages to my car, because I'm not gonna be able to pay that surcharge, I will not be able to keep the vehicle. But I just wanted to ask your help in that matter, and I appreciate your listening to me.
Counselor Davis?
I yield to the city manager.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And Ms. Lee, let me just say that I'm sorry about the situation that, that we're dealing with. Mr. Mayor and counsel, our risk manager, Ann Marie, is, is out of town and could not be here, but she did send me an email, and I'd like to just kind of convey some information that's contained in the email. And, and let me just first say that when accidents or incidents such as this occur, we do, when we can't agree with the other party and they have insurance, we encourage them to go through their insurance and let their insurance handle their claim, and the insurance will subrogate to get their money back from the city if they feel the city is at fault. And based on the information provided to me from Ann Marie and based on what I've just heard Ms. Lee say, she did go through her insurance, State Farm insurance. And so they have paid and satisfied her claim. And so what we do in cases like this is we wait on State Farm or any other insurance company to subrogate if they feel we were at fault. And so in other words, once your insurance company is involved and they are handling your claim, then we deal with the insurance company, because if they feel the other party's at fault, they are going to subrogate to get their money back from the city. And so, right now, because they've handled and satisfied her And so, right now, because they've handled and satisfied her claim and paid diminishing value, because, you know, a few years back, there was a national lawsuit that was won that required you pay diminishing, uh, diminished value. And so, I think they've paid Ms. Lee's claim and diminished value.
Yes, sir.
And so, and so then, um, going forward, you know, typically, insurance companies, based on your claim history, will determine if there's going to be an adjustment in your insurance. And typically, it's based on claim history. In other words, if you, if it's your first accident, you know, may not be an issue. If it's your second accident, may or may not be an issue. But if it's your third or fourth, and you've got homeowners with them and you've had multiple claims, you may get a surcharge with insurance companies. And so, you all know how that works. But here's what has been reported to me by, um, our risk manager, Anne Marie Amiel. Uh, Ms. Lee hit a pile of, uh, crush and run that had been offloaded by a truck on Moss Drive. And I really would like for staff to put the picture up of the, uh, of the pile. That's what's sitting, taking up a lane of the road. This is at nine o'clock, eight fifty-eight AM in the morning. If you're riding down the road, that's sitting in the road.
Who dumped that?
Uh, one of our trucks. But it's sitting in the road in a lane at nine o'clock AM. And so, there are men at work sand in, in, around the area. It's what's reported to me. And so, that pile was about five feet, six inches high, sitting in the road. And so, they left that with men working sands, two on her side of the road, one at the intersection prior to the block on which she had the accident, and one right before the pile of crush and run. There were also barrels around the big hole in the road ahead of her, and there were, in fact, men working on the road. Um, and it's my understanding that, um, Ms. Lee's car, she did hit the, um, crush and run, and she proceeded to drive home two blocks away. And once she got home, she, sometime later, she called the police to report this. And it says here, there was a considerable delay between the time she ran into the pile and the time she placed her calls. Um, she was told she should not have left the scene, is what's reported here. Um, but she acknowledges in this note to me, the driver of the truck delivering the crush and run did, in fact, drop his load on the wrong street. Um, and so, Ms. Lee made the decision to go through, she made the decision to go through her insurance company for repairs. Once that decision has been made, risk management will back out until such time as a subrogation package is received from the insurance company. Uh, we have not heard from her insurance company. Um, it would appear that they agreed with our assessment that Ms. Lee was at fault for the accident. Um, she's been paid diminished value for her car, which is a standard practice in the insurance industry, and thus, she's been made whole, according to what I'm receiving. Uh, in terms of the surcharge, we can't speak to that, she can't speak to that because we all have insurance. And we know how it works. If there's one claim in three years, or two claims in three years, or three or more than three, then you get into the surcharge. So I don't know how that works. And I can say I have State Farm insurance as well, so, um, um, but, so, those are the facts that I have. And so, insurance is paid off, they've paid diminished value, we're waiting for the subrogation.
Counselor.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I, I appreciate those comments. I know you're reading them from risk management and, and, uh, you know, I, I appreciate the city taking a stance and defending itself, but I, I don't agree. That does not negate the responsibility of the city in this situation. Um, a, a, and I want to make a few points here. This is a matter that's come to my attention. As a matter of fact, Mr. City Manager, you and I had a conversation about this, uh, a while back, and I was advised to let it go through the process. And that's exactly what I did. Ms. Lee reached out to me, uh, I reached out to a few of my colleagues here through, uh, Mr. Lane Jimmison, who, uh, who contacted me on behalf of Ms. Lee. She didn't know what to do when it, when it happened. Uh, but there's a little bit more to add to what's been expressed today. Uh, if, if I'm not mistaken, and my memory serves me right, that was not just a, a, in an average morning. I think it was overcast and it was raining a little too at the time, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Um, the, the, the problem here is that the city just dumped it in the road, and there were no warning devices, no signs, no cones, no barricades, no nothing. It was there. And, look, I, I, I don't know Ms. Lee very well, but sometimes, you know, you're going down the road and something that blends in, or you can see it blends into the road, I mean, depending on who it is. Now, I may have eagle vision, but other people may not have eagle vision, and you may not see it. Anyway, it was hit. And I think she realized, I don't know what her schedule was that day, and I think she realized later it was hit, and she didn't know what to do and reached out. But she did go back and talk to some people there about it. I think the city came back later and put the barricades and all out. So, anyway, I, I, it's my understanding that i- if you were to get to know Ms. Lee, that she has a stellar driving record, um, she's a wonderful lady, very patient, and she agreed to go through the process. And now, I, you know, it's come to this council. I did not know. I had not received a phone call yet, but I did indirectly advise to go through the process and let's see how it takes place. And that's usually how the, the process works. But now, I hear you say that your insurance company came back and charged you a surcharge, which I'm assuming is a one, is that a one-time?
Every, every six months.
Every six months. So they've raised your, your rates now because of the accident. And that will be a continuing, a continuing increase in your insurance. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I thought it was a one-time, possibly a one-time, uh, one-time cost there. But, you know, and, and maybe my colleagues would like to comment on this as well, but here's a situation where, you know, you've got a citizen that, that it wasn't, you know, in my opinion, it was not her fault. There was an obstruction placed in the road by the city, and, and now we've got a, a situation. Um, I, I'm not sure, Mr. City Manager, I heard you say that risk management director's coming back, that they haven't heard from the insurance company and that there possibly might be some more?
Now, here's the deal, um, Counselor. The, in, her insurance company has paid for her vehicle. They've made her whole.
I understand that.
They've, they've fixed the vehicle and provided additional funding for diminishing value. I don't know what action you can take here, because she's been paid and made whole, her car has been repaired. And so, when the insurance company, if they determine that, well, city, we paid this, but City of Columbus, you're at fault, then they're going to send us a bill. And they're going to use every resource that they have to force us to pay that bill. So we're going to be dealing with State Farm if they feel we're at fault. If they've determined that we're not at fault, then they are going to just move on. And so, when we hear from them, we either going to pay the claim or we're going to fight State Farm. And so, we'll see when we hear from them. But because they have repaired her vehicle and paid diminished value, I don't know what else you can do. There's nothing that you can do for Ms. Lee regarding that claim because her car's been repaired and she's been paid diminished value. Now, we agree that, there, there's no question that it, the, the crush and run was dump, dumped on five foot, six inches worth in a lane on the wrong road. And, and so, um, she's here and, and...
Who, Mr. City Manager, who pla, paid the claim?
State Farm.
Okay.
They've already paid for everything.
Okay. So let me ask you something. If this had been a situation where the, the insurance company was made whole, and they didn't have to pay the claim, would Ms. Lee be possibly paying this annual, uh, increase on her rates that was caused by this accident, which I, yes, you're right, you cannot control the insurance company is jacking their rates up. That's what they're doing. You know, they do it to all of us. Uh, I, I don't like that because it, to me, I'm just going to say it, it sounds like a ripoff, uh, but...
Well, let me just say, Counselor...
But if it was taken care of on the front end, I question, would that surcharge be tagged on or the increase in the rate if the company was made whole?
Well, if, I, 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 I'm not an insurance agent, but I, I know a few agents. And, I, I mean, I could ask the question. Uh, but, um, if, if, if you are not at fault in an accident, and the other insurance company is going to pay it, uh, that's not a chargeable accident. Your insurance rates are adjusted when they're chargeable accidents.
Did the city tell Ms. Lee that they would not pay for it, that they were not at fault?
I, I don't have that in my notes.
I'd like to know that answer.
Yeah. And, 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 and let me just say, even if they did tell them they're not at fault, um, a lot of people think they're not at fault until it gets adjudicated, you know? And so, but, but the other insurance company, her insurance company will make a determination as, there's a lawyer over there, I mean, there are a couple of lawyers around here. Their insurance company will make a determination as to whether they think the city is at fault. And if they do, they're going to subrogate it, and they have lots of lawyers.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but, uh, I understand the position. I said it in the beginning, I appreciate the city defending itself. But if I'm being placed in a situation, or this council, that we can make this whole, then I want to understand this matter a whole lot better because something's not adding up here. It's just, it's just not adding up in this situation.
Well, 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 let me just say this.
The, the city dumped a pile of asphalt in the lane that covered a whole lane with no warning or caution or anything and left it. They left it. It just happened to be Ms. Lee that day. It, it could have been you, it could have been any council member here that hit that thing.
And, and let me just...
It could have been me.
Let me just say that we could go and offer State Farm a check to pay her claims. But if they've determined she's at fault, it's still an at-fault accident.
I don't know, Ken. I'm, guess I'm asking you, can you go back to risk management and get them to look in this a little bit further?
I will do that.
And give us a...
I will certainly do that.
Bring back a report on it.
Yes.
I think at this point, that's probably the best we can do to understand.
Yeah, I, I think we're, I, just based on what I'm, I'm listening to, we're kind of limited. I mean, basically, what's happened is, for whatever reason, the, the company has decided to increase her, her rate, I think, very significantly increased her rate. Uh, and she needs to have some conversation with her company. But, um, if the claim's been satisfied, the only thing that they're doing now is trying to protect themselves from future payouts with, with their insured, is, is what it sounds like to me. We've got a couple of other councils. Counselor Allen?
Well, I, the only, I would, I appreciate you agreeing to go back and look at it again. Uh, the thing that concerns me is, we wouldn't be here, Ms. Lee wouldn't be here if we hadn't dumped it on the wrong street.
Sure.
Uh, so I, I think there's, you know, some at-fault there. Uh, you can look at the weather, you can look at the shadows, you can, you know, all this kind of blends in. Uh, it, it just, it just doesn't add up to me. And I, I would like for us to go back and talk with State Farm and try to reach an agreement on settlement and get this off her record, because she wouldn't be here. Her, her rates wouldn't be increased if we hadn't dumped it in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
So I, I think we need to do the right thing here. I, I don't, I don't like us forcing a citizen to, uh, go to, through litigation to, for something like this to happen. And I, and I think that's where we're headed, if, if we don't get this straightened out.
And we'll certainly take a look. I, I mean, I don't have all the, the details about who is at fault, but I can say to you that when your rates are adjusted by your insurance company, there is a reason. There's a reason when you get surcharged. I don't know what that reason is, but there is a reason that, that insurance companies are going to surcharge you. It's not for, typically, it's not for a good driving record. And so, we will go and look, certainly. And, you know, I agree that that pile should not have been, that crush and run should not have been dumped there. It, the accident would not have occurred if that, if that error had not been made. But, you know, accidents and do happen, and, but we're, we're going to look into it and, you know, if, if, if we're at fault and, and we can do whatever, I don't know how much the, the damage was, I have no problem paying the damage if we're at fault.
Well, I think her information she provided here, it looks like it's around five thousand, five, fifty, eight hundred dollars, something like that. So you certainly can agree attorneys are going to cost a lot more than that.
Well, so, so again, but you're right, we were here from State Farm, and if we disagree and say, State Farm, we're not paying you, then that's when they get their lawyers obviously involved, yeah.
Then we have to get our lawyers, then we have to pay lawyers for something that...
Oh, I agree with you.
Could go away easily.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll look further into it.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Counselor Thomas?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure, uh, what we're being asked to pay.
As I understood it, there was a surcharge. She termed it a surcharge, every six months. But it sounds to me like it's an increase in her, her rates that she'll, she's billed every six months for.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that's it.
As far as the material that she has given to us, it looks like the claim has been satisfied, and as a result of this accident, State Farm has now increased her rate.
Mm-hmm.
And is that what we're being asked to pay, is the increase in the rate?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
To, to pay for the, um, damage that, um, was paid to H and M and for the, I don't know the exact word you used, um...
Subrogation.
Diminished...
Diminished value.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so H and M charged you fifty-eight sixty-one, State Farm paid a thousand sixty-nine, so you're looking to us for thirty-seven hundred ninety-two dollars difference? Is that what you're asking us?
Now, State Farm paid the full claim, right?
Right. I'm just asking if State Farm is reimbursed for what they paid. If they are, I'm not, I will never pay the surcharge, period. But if this is not taken care of, then I will have to pay the surcharge every six months.
I still don't know what we're being asked to pay.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we, I think what we need to do, I think what we need to do right now is, is let's follow back up with our risk management department because she probably has a clearer understanding of the process in this. And, and what I'm hearing Ms. Lee saying, it may be something she feels passionately about, but, but I, it would be highly unusual, I think, for, for an insurance company to reduce the rates, because they look at it, our rates went up one, one time because my wife had had two accidents, wasn't at fault in either one. But because she was involved in two, and it went through the process, our rates went up because she was deemed unlucky or, or a higher risk, or whatever you want to call it. I haven't heard of them saying, oh, wait a minute, that one wasn't your fault, let's, let's roll back the increase. But I, I think that the recommendation that Counselor Davis made was a good one, and that is, let's go back to risk management, drop it in her lap, have, have her explain this a little more thoroughly to us, let her reach out to State Farm, find out what, if anything, can be done to mitigate this.
And let's do it with all haste.
Yes, we will.
Post haste.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm sorry.
Counselor Davis is next.
Yeah, I know there's, you know, it, it's gonna go back and be looked at, but look, the, the bottom line here is that, you know, the city was at fault, if the city, the city's self-insured, okay? Being self-insured, uh, kind of, it, it's good for the city and bad for the citizens, if I'm somewhat, it protects the city in many, many ways, which is good, that's good for the citizens as well, but, um, I mean, if the city would have stepped up to the plate in the beginning and took care of the costs, the insurance company would have never been involved, therefore, her surcharge, or her increased cost would have never taken place, it wouldn't have been her fault, that's what she's saying. But we, the way we do things is, we always tell them to go through the process and go to your insurance company, well, you know, naturally, they're going to cover the cost in situations like this, but the, the, uh, person having the insurance is gonna pay the cost, but, uh, Mayor, um, I, I, Ms. Lee has been so patient, she, uh, took her time to come down here, it looks like she wanted to say a few things, I wanted to afford her that opportunity to finish.
Well, she can come back at the end of the meeting, and we'll give her three more, we'll give her three more minutes.
Then I have a question for her.
Okay, you can ask her a question.
Ms. Lee, what do you want to say?
Counselor, that's circumventing the entire process.
Okay, Ms. Lee, it looked like you were, something was on your mind, and that you wanted to discuss what we were discussing.
I just wanted to make a statement.
Ma'am?
I just wanted to make a statement.
Ma'am, and, and I-
I'd like to hear your statement.
And, and we will, and we will, but unfortunately, we have to have some hard, fast rules for the public agenda.
Yes, sir.
So we want you to be able to, to make your statement, so we've got about another thirty minutes, hopefully, of, of the council meeting left. We'll call you back up and, and let you make it then, unless any of the other counselors have a direct question, then we can address that.
Mayor, with, with all due, all due respect, this could be resolved right here, and Ms. Lee, like I said, Ms. Lee has been very patient, Ms. Lee, I do have a question for you. Uh, are you upset with your insurance company, how they've handled this matter?
No, sir, I haven't really let them handle it, because, well, you, I'll wait to tell you when, when you're allowed, when I'm allowed to come back.
Ms. Lee, thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Uh, Counselor, Counselor Woodson had a-
Ms. Lee, I have a question, because I want to make sure I understand everything, okay? Um, so what you're asking for us is, that if we pay, you're hoping, what you're hoping is, that if we pay back the money that State Farm paid for your vehicle, or repairing, you know, repairing your vehicle, you're hoping that State Farm will then not charge you a higher premium, premium? Is that what you're asking, is that what you're seeking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and like I said, I'm in agreeance with them, let them go back and talk, because we should not give you the impression, or promise you that State Farm would do that, because we don't know what their policies are, okay? So I don't want to, just because we're sending it back, and we talked to State Farm, and State Farm takes our money, but they might not change your premium.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to be very clear with that, um, and with them going back to check, and I've had a couple accidents that have not been my fault, one of them was, and my insurance went way up, the others didn't, and I'm just waiting to find me another carrier. But, um, I just want to make sure I understood, because I was like Counselor Thomas, a little bit unsure of what you were asking for. So thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say at the end.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, it's been said a number of ways, I'm, Ms. Lee, we're glad you weren't hurt, but this really is a legal issue for risk management and State Farm, because it's city and State Farm issue on subrogation, and, uh, we ought to let them look at it further, and, and, you know, come back with a recommendation.
Very good, thank you, sir. All right, uh, next up is the City Manager's agenda.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I did just want to make a final comment on that issue. I am very pleased with the work of our risk manager and our risk management office. They do a very fine job, uh, in representing the taxpayers and, and this body when it comes to, uh, claims that come in, and we have claims that come in on a daily basis from any and everything that you can think of, and, um, and they work hard to protect, um, the interests of the taxpayers, and they do a fine job. We will bring back all of the information, but, um, but they don't have, it's not an easy job for them, and I just want that recognized, and they, they do it just like an insurance company would do it, any insurance company, and, uh, and they do a very fine job at it. With that, uh, the City Manager's agenda. First, I've got the Georgia Exceptional Main Street Program MOU, we come to you with this, um, every, uh, few years, and it's, um, with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to maintain Columbus's local Main Street designation by the National Main Street Center, and appoint Uptown Columbus to serve as the Local Main Street Program Board of Directors, and they agree to fulfill the financial requirements. In the event this financial support is not available, uh, the city, CCG reserves a right to terminate the MOU, uh, which would result in the loss of the Main Street designation, we're asking your approval.
Is that cool?
Second. Motion, second, approve, uh, MOU.
I have a question.
Okay, we do have a question, Counselor Allen?
I was trying to find the cost associated with this. Um, I, I think I read where, there, there's a matching, is that?
Well, and, and the cost is covered by Uptown, so there's no cost to us.
All right, but it, is there, do we know what the cost is?
I do not.
Is this a contract where we're responsible if Uptown doesn't pay?
If, if, if Uptown fails to pay, the city can terminate the MOU, and it still would be no cost to us, the only thing is that if we terminate it, we would lose the Main Street designation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right, any further discussion? If not, Bruce, would you cue the votes? Counselor, please register your votes. It passes.
Uh, I've got flood control structures, emergency action plan, and we're requesting that you approve or adopt the emergency action plan for the Bull Creek watershed structures, and there are a number of them, and authorize our engineer and director to forward a copy to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division. Uh, and the purpose of the plan is to prescribe procedures to be followed in the event of an emergency or unusual condition associated with one of the category dams, um, and, um, this may be, obviously be caused by unusual large flood events, or earthquake, or malfunction of a spillway, and, you know, a few years back, we did have a malfunction of a spillway. Um, and so, uh, the city would bear the cause for implementation of the plan, but it's the flood control structures, emergency action plan, and we're asking your approval.
Motion, second, approve. Any discussion? If not, please cue it, and counselors, you can register your votes. And it passes.
I've got lease agreement with Bulldog bait and tackle at Road Report.
Motion, second, approve, uh, renewal of the lease. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Barnes?
Mr. City Manager's attention, Laura Johnson does a heck of a good-
Oh, yeah.
Oh, she's here.
That was well timed. Joe worked that out?
There's no timing on that. I know this is somewhat of a little contentious thing, but I, I want to thank you for the way you worked with this gentleman here. He called me on the phone, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a, I don't know how long he before I came on council, that's, that has been there, everybody knows that couple, so I appreciate you really working through that situation, and I didn't, I like to throw on record by saying, I didn't know she was even here, but she does a phenomenal job.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Can we, did we- Did we vote on that, did cue it?
We didn't vote.
We need to cue it, please. Thank you, register your votes then. And it's approved.
Next, I've got Cascade Hills Church Agreement, uh, they are requesting to enter a five-year agreement, um, for their Easter service, their annual Easter service, and they've been doing this since 2015 each year, and so what they've asked us to do is to, um, go ahead and do a five-year agreement, and it'll add around ten thousand dollars to the annual Civic Center revenue, uh, and-
Counselor, motion, second, Counselor Davis, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I, I'd just like to let everybody know, this is, um, this is my church, it's, uh, it's my home church, and this is a, a wonderful, wonderful event, and it's changed a lot of lives, and I, I, you know, I'm just really grateful to the city that's been working with, with our church here, but, uh, Mr. Scott Dykes is in the audience back here, and they called me and just shared some things with me that, Ms. City Manager, if I may, if I may take a moment, um, that I just think it's, it's important for everyone to hear, and for our staff to hear, uh, the appreciation that they showed, and, and, uh, the, the communication of how the city is going above and beyond, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. Mr. Butch Jordan is here too, as well, and I think they would like to share some things about, uh, how the relationship has gone, if I may, so I'm just, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I'd let them just share a couple comments about this.
I mean, we probably need to vote on that, because typically, we allow them to come up at the end of the meeting, and give them three minutes if they're not on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, they be heard, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post?
Sir.
Good morning, I'm Butch Jordan, and I'm on ca, uh, staff at Cascade Hills Church, and it's Scott Dykes, our administrator. Uh, we've been very, what's the last, five years to have an Easter service in the Civic Center, uh, and we asked for, uh, from them, possibly a five-year contract rather than a year-to-year to renew, have an opportunity to use the Civic Center. Uh, our service has grown in the last five years, just tremendous, we, uh, had probably nine thousand attended this past Easter, so we asked for, you know, possibly have up to a five-year, uh, lease agreement, uh, and they told us that, you know, it needed to come to City Council, which I certainly appreciate and respect, and I reached out to, uh, Mr. Davis, just to kind of fill him in, our thoughts, and we have thoroughly enjoyed the association with the Civic Center, I know y'all hear probably a lot of bad stuff, and listened this morning, a lot of problems, you don't have a problem with this, we have really enjoyed, the staff is, excuse me, especially the last three years, it's been awesome, uh, they got customer service down, so our relationship with them has just been fantastic, so, uh, we'd just like to consider, you should consider, you know, if we do this five-year, uh, because the last five years have just been fantastic, but thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank y'all very much. All right, we have a motion, the second, oh, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, this is a ten thousand dollar annual, uh, income, right? Ten thousand dollars a year for the five years?
Yes.
Not ten thousand over the five years?
As I understand it, it's ten thousand dollars annually.
Each year?
Yes.
Thank you.
It would add.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, there is a motion, the second, if we could cue the votes, and Counselor, you can register yours. Y'all fast, that's approved. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Next, I've got a juvenile drug court grant, it's four hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the juvenile drug court grant, any discussion? If not, please cue it, and counselors, register your votes. That's approved.
Got a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar family drug court grant.
Motion, second, approve the family drug court grant, any discussion? Please cue it. Register your votes, please. And it's approved.
Next, I've got a donation of a fire truck from our fire EMS to Montezuma.
Move it through, go.
Motion, second, approve the donation surplus fire truck, any, any, uh, discussion? Please cue it. Y'all may cast your votes. It's approved, thank you.
Next, I've got a memorandum of understanding with Muscoy County School Bulwark to accept transfer ownership of three inoperable school buses for fire EMS, and they'll use them in future school bus extrication training.
Motion, second, to, uh, accept the school buses, any discussion? All right, please cue it, and counselors, please register your votes. That's approved.
Next, Mr. Mayor, I've, um, got a request that, uh, the city accept, um, approval to request an easement, uh, with Best Buy stores for permanent access easement for something called Katie DeCal.
Motion approved.
All right, there's a motion, and Counselor Davis?
Certainly, I'm fine with this. Mr. City Manager, I, I guess, having that easement, now, who, I guess, does that mean that the city of Columbus owns Katie DeCal?
Well, we, we took ownership in two thousand and one.
Yeah.
And, but, the eas-
Now we have permanent easement.
Yes, sir.
Well, could, could you do me a favor, maybe, I think we've got like a portable pressure washer, could we go out there, if, if we're going to, you know, take care of Katie DeCal, then we really need to take care of Katie DeCal.
Clean her up.
Can we go out there and clean her up a little bit, just-
Let us figure out how-
Give her a nice, uh, bath, and, you know, soap her up a little bit, and clean her up a little bit, but can, you know, as long as, if, if Katie's ours, let's take care of Katie.
And so, it's my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that Best Buy has agreed to paint her up and do all that, so-
Yeah, Best Buy has, uh, has offered to give Katie a bath, and give her a new coat of paint, and, um, and has even offered to come up with some type of commemoration, whether it's a plaque or something, not on Katie, of course, but, uh, to recognize her significant and notable contribution. So, but we'll bring that back to council before any of that is done, other than debating.
Present check for lady.
That's great, she's been in the weather quite a while, I don't, I don't think we've got a barn for her, but she'll be all right.
Thanks, sir, Counselor Crabbe?
I've been, um, kind of mulling this over since Katie lives in District Five, and, um, I've, I will want to approach maybe a Boy Scout who's wanting to do an Eagle Project, and, um, other options that we could keep Katie in good-looking condition from going forward.
I'm sure Katie appreciates the attention, and that is a good idea, I mean, she has, I, I think through some of the moves, and threatened moves, she has become even more iconic than, than she, she began, so. All right, um, we have a motion, do we have a motion? Motion, and a second, all right, if we could cue it, to, uh, keep Katie in her pasture. That's approved, thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I've got some purchases, uh, first, I've got an alternate source for work uniforms with CINTAS, C-I-N-T-A-S, and, um, they'll be utilized as an alternate source for uniform on an as-needed basis, we're asking your approval.
Okay, there's a motion-
Second.
And a second, is that just for item A?
Well, I was gonna say, let me just go ahead and approve, or make a motion to approve A through F, if nobody has exception.
Does anybody want an item pulled for discussion?
I'll second this motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second, approve items A through F and the purchases, please cue the vote, and counselors, please register your vote. Purchases passed, but Mr. City Manager, would you briefly run through what each of them are, please?
Yes, sir, the first one, as I said, alternate, uh, source for uniforms, roofing service at Mildred Tillis Recreation Center, and let me just say that this roof is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars, and, uh, the source of funding for that roof is CDBG funding, and, uh, Counselor Barnes mentioned Laura Johnson and- And Council Barnes mentioned Laura Johnson and her person, and she's been on an amazing job figuring out how to do things around here.
Amen, brother.
Consulting services for information technology, reimbursement for legacy terrace upgrade modifications, got lot clearing services on an as-needed basis, and then repair of 2007 Caterpillar 725 haul truck. Those are the purchases, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And the final item I have on my agenda is an update from our Parks and Rec Director, Holly Browder. She's gonna come and talk about Passport to Columbus and Night Ballers. Ms. Holly Browder.
While Ms. Browder is coming to the podium, I know we do this often, but we should do it even more, and I want to sing her praises and the praises of the staff of Parks and Recreation for the Kid Palooza that was held down on 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge. What an amazing, amazing event, and it was done by our Parks and Rec along with collaboration with the Police Department, Fire Department, Georgia Power Company, Safe Kids, and I'm sure there are others that I've forgotten. But, I mean, they were giving out life jackets and made it fun and educational, required the kids actually go on a treasure hunt and learn something at each place in order to be signed off on their new flotation devices. And it just, you know, when you see them out there giving their Saturday afternoon up, and they're working and they're making sure that everybody enjoys it, it just, it's a reminder of what an incredible group of employees the city has working for. And under your leadership, they just did an amazing job. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun.
Council Barnes, I'm sorry.
And before she gets started, I was not here last Tuesday, had some health issues, but I am so glad to this council here. And Holly Kane, I don't have to, everyone knows what a fantastic job this young lady also has done with Parks and Recs and situations when she comes up with marvelous ideas like the swimming pools. I'm really glad that we stepped up to the plate and supported her for the requests that she needs for Parks and Recs. I do realize, over many years since I've been on council, that Parks and Recs is one of the areas where through just trying to balance things out where we have not, in my estimation, my estimation, funded Parks and Recs. I'm really glad, last week, to have seen, and Mr. City Manager, your huge endorsement. Because it's, Parks and Recs, just like Public Safety, is for the citizens, you know? And so I really appreciate that. And no, she has not paid me any inducements or anything like that, or anybody says anything near the street, but you have some really good employees working for the city. Many of them are unsung heroes, and she's one of them, so.
Holly?
Thank you. Good morning, Council, Mr. City Manager, Mayor. Very quickly, this morning, I'm going to go over our new summer fund pass. That's what most people knew it as last year. This year, we're thinking of it in a little bit of a different way, because we've added a lot more opportunities for the community and for our families to participate in for the summer. So if you will, we're gonna think of it as a passport, and so just a little kind of example of what it will look like. It will look like simply a passport with a front cover where they'll have their name and their information, and then you'll open it up where they'll have the rest of that information as far as what they can do. So very briefly, this is sort of what the front cover will have information-wise, gives them an opportunity for us to have the kid's name on it, be a little more interactive, a little more personal, and then it tells them, you know, what they can and cannot do. And then moving along, these are the activities and things that will be included this year. We were able to really get out and partner with more agencies and organizations, very similar to, as the mayor spoke just a moment ago, something we did this weekend. We're really trying to focus on collaboration and partnerships in the city to allow our resources to go further with all entities. And so simply, you can see our department, everything will be the same as what we did last year, the ice rink will be the same, Metra's is very similar, but this year there'll be more opportunities, so obviously kids will want to ride to a few other locations. So keeping with what they do, their information is provided. We've also partnered with the National Civil War Museum, the Infancy Museum, the Columbus Museum, and skipping ahead, we have Oxbow Meadows, the Liberty, the River Center, Chattahoochee Valley Libraries, and Historic Westville. So these are the opportunities that families will have for free or no cost, low-cost opportunities for the summer to keep kids busy while they're out of school. And we've given the dates because it's simply from the first Saturday, which is May 25th, right up until the timeframe that they go back to school. And so it pretty much keeps them busy, I think, all but maybe the last week when they're busy doing re-verification and registration with schools. It provides for the out-of-school summertime this summer. And here again, here are many of the partners, just to give you an idea who's gonna be involved. But it's basically our community and those who support families and children. Does anyone have any questions? Because I'm gonna skip ahead, jump really quickly to the next. Any questions on our pass for the summer?
Well, and I'll-
Ma'am, I'm sorry. No, we don't. I can tell you, based on what I provided to you guys previously, we gave out 3,700. We're printing 5,000 this year, just because we have more partners, and so we believe there's more opportunities for families and may have more interest. And so we're trying to be a little proactive in that way. Obviously, we can go back and get more printed if we see that we're gonna run out. That's what we did last year. Last year, we only printed about 3,000, and as we got closer to that shorter stack, we just went back and had more printed, so we could provide those.
And I want to thank Ms. Browder, too, because one of the initiatives that we came into office talking about was trying to engage young people and give them a little bit more structure, a little bit more of an opportunity to get involved in positive activities. And the way, again, the Parks and Recreation Department and Lisa Goodman, they have taken this and run with it. We wanted to add cultural opportunities and options to this, to try to, a lot of these children will be exposed to locations and events that they otherwise probably would never see. And to be able to create a curiosity about some of the more cultural identified areas, I think is gonna reap benefits down the road. And I just want to commend y'all and thank you for working so hard to broaden the opportunities presented with this passport summer.
Yes, sir. So I'm gonna move right along. The next topic I'd like to talk about really quickly, just to give you a brief overview for the summer, is our Night Ballers basketball. It has a different name, is the big thing. For most people in our community, they know our adult basketball program, our summer basketball program from years ago as the Midnight Basketball Program. This year, we'll be, we'll be starting the program back up. We do have a new name, a little bit different look, obviously, but it's gonna be called the Night Ballers Basketball. A lot of the things that we did previously will be those replicated again now. Registration is a short window, but we've already, had already been advertising, then we opened registration, but we'd already been advertising. The age group is gonna be males 18 to 27 years of age and females 18 and over. We posted flyers in all the rec centers, we did 4D advertising spots on the radio stations, and also, of course, social media. We currently had 32 males registered and two females is what we have. That was as of last week. We'll have mandatory evaluation dates. Those are basically, if you will, tryouts kind of situation, so coaches can come and see what players' ability, so they can be seated to put on teams. The season's gonna start on June 14th, which is a Friday night, and it'll conclude on August the 3rd. Games are gonna be played, obviously, like I said, Fridays and Saturdays. And right now, we are going to tentatively look at having Frank Tester and Shirley Winston. We've blocked those locations, and those will be our locations. And it really depends on how many teams we have, but being proactive, trying to prepare for the season, that's what we're looking at. In years past, we played at Shirley Winston, and right now, that's sort of where we're looking at, but we do want to be prepared in case we have more players that sign up. We want to be able to play everybody. One of the things that we will add, as we did previously, is we'll have speakers that will come out, they'll be required to attend these different, if you will, education sessions. They're not always just education, but they're geared in that way. But we'll have potential speakers. Some of those speakers that we've been discussing and meeting with is Jonathan Rivers. All these are local people, local folks that are from our community, DeMarcus Smith, DJ Jones, and Dale Williams. And of course, we have law enforcement, Health Department officials, folks like that that'll be involved, but just kind of wanted to give you guys an overview of where we are and what we're doing. And of course, this program is fully funded. One of the things, as City Manager said earlier, we are huge fans of Laura Johnson, community reinvestment, have been working very well with her the past three or four years. We like spending her money. We find good uses for it in our community and hope everybody else agrees with that, but certainly trying to do the most with what we can. And this is one of those opportunities that we have, to be able to fund this program and bring it back to the community and give folks something to do in the summer. So this will be, like I said, our first year coming back doing this. It's been quite a number of years since we've offered it, so it will have a different look. It will have somewhat the same feel, if you will, but for the most part, it will be very similar to what we've done previously in years past. And that is it, if anyone has any questions.
Counselor House? What times on Fridays and Saturdays are you gonna play?
That's gonna be dictated by how many teams we have. Typically, we look at playing at 7:00, 8:00, and 9:00 o'clock, is what we look at playing. But again, that depends on how many teams, and so we're sort of open-ended at this point as to what it will look like until we finish. I did talk to staff to see if there was an availability. Could we extend registration if we don't have quite as many players or teams as we would like? We really don't have a lot of extra time to be able to do that this season with being able to order uniforms and then start evaluations and everything. But sometimes, starting small is good, having a soft start, if you will. We'll do a great job and make sure there's any concerns we have for the next season, that we grow stronger and do a better job each year. We're just excited to have the program back, as is the community, and looking forward to offering it this summer.
Great, thank you. Counselor Barnes?
And I want to say, that's one of the things that you talked about on the trail. So you're coming through with one of the many times that I know the individuals in the community. So you've got a good report, as my grandmother used to say. And Isaiah, thank you much, and this young lady, I don't need to say anymore.
No.
I'll tell you, in this job and that one, sometimes you get blamed for stuff you didn't do. Sometimes you get to take bows for things you didn't do. And this was, this was a focus of ours, but we just stayed out of the way of Parks and Recreation and Lisa Goodman and Holly Browder, and they're the ones that made that work.
And the educational aspect, having speakers along with it, you definitely throw it outside the box with something like that. This is great. I'm excited.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Holly.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no questions, and, Mr. Mayor, I know that Laura Johnson's name has been mentioned a number of times, but since Director Browder is there, there is a CDBG-funded playground at 29th Street Gym. If you haven't been by to see it, you need to go by and see it. It's about $175,000 worth. And it's the most awesome playground I've ever seen. And it was funded by CDBG, so there again, they are doing some good things with, creative things with CDBG funding, and it's helping to relieve the general fund budget from having to do those things. So thank you again to Holly Browder, and thank you to Laura Johnson. Did you want to say something?
I was just gonna say, if you have not had the opportunity, as he said, it is an extremely nice playground. We were super excited to be able to work on that project. It's something that we did with a national playground manufacturer, as well as our statewide association for Georgia Recreation and Parks. And we are, when you go, if you have an opportunity to go, there is a placard, a sign on the side, that we are designated as a national demonstration site for national playgrounds now with this particular playground, because we set the example for what playgrounds should represent, for what playgrounds should incorporate, and how they're able to provide opportunities for all children at all levels and all abilities. And so that's what that playground is about. Just super excited, thank you so much for bringing that up. But we did, that was a project that I went to Laura about, and she was gracious enough to work with us on that and provide the funding. So it is a great opportunity. We're just trying to spread the wealth in our community and make sure we try to help all of our citizens across the community, so, but it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
And, you know, it's amazing how we are able to leverage a lot of different financing options. The CDBG was one, and of course, we had the opportunity, Counselor Woodson and Counselor Huff and myself, to accept a $50,000 check on behalf of a group that intend to try to do that annually to help enhance our parks and playground equipment and to get children outside. So- Yeah, it was, and I shouldn't have started talking about it, because the senioritis hit, and I can't remember the name of the gym, but the young woman's name's Mary, and they did an amazing, amazing job raising that money, and they want nothing more than to try to help Columbus's children be outside and active, so.
We're very fortunate, you're correct, to have the ability to work with groups like that. And so, yes, that is for the Theo McGee Playground-
The Theo McGee, that's right.
-that will be replaced, and so we'll be using that funding to go back in.
And that's the one that a less-than-community-minded act necessitated redoing that. Somebody set it on fire, and these people stepped up and replaced it.
Absolutely.
Thank you for what you do.
No problem, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. We'll move to the Clerk's Agenda. Madam Clerk?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's Agenda, the first item is a resolution excusing Counselor Huff from the April 30th, 2019 meeting.
We got a motion, a second to approve. Do we cue that, Bruce, or do we just take a voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item number two is a resolution to change the regularly scheduled council meetings for the month of June. First, to change the June 4th, 2019 proclamation resolution session to a regular council meeting to be held at 5:30 PM, a special call meeting on June 18th at 9:00 AM, and counseling the meeting scheduled for June 25th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move the motion. Could you set it up for approval? Is that, okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Next, we have an add-on resolution.
Ms. Davis, I, we were in a meeting yesterday, and there was some confusion about the council meeting that wa, excuse me, was scheduled for the 28th. That will be a regular council meeting, is that correct?
That is correct. There was a suggestion to change it from the time, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 AM.
Did we change it?
We have that listed as the add-on resolution.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I didn't read, I didn't read the next line. Thank you.
I'll second the nominations, Ms. Counselor Thomas.
So, Counselor Thomas, you moved it, and Gary seconded? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Next, for the Employee Benefits Committee, we received a memorandum from the Human Resources Department submitting the results of the employee survey. Mr. Michael Jordan has been selected as a General Government Employee Selection. Mr. Dustin Heath, Assistant Finance Director, was selected to succeed Director Seth Brown. Mr. Lance Deeden was selected by the Public Safety Employees. Mr. Troy Vanerson, Public Works, was selected to succeed Jennifer McDonald. We may have a motion to confirm.
So I move.
All in favor? Any objections? Motion passes.
Item number four, the Medical Center Hospital Authority, we received a letter from Mr. Michael Gorham, who is the chairman advising of the selection of Mr. Frederick McKnight and Dr. Carol Rutland. They may be confirmed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Members of various, members of various board, we have a motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Davis, thank you.
Move approval. All in favor? Has been moved, next.
Next, we have board appointments. We have council appointments that are ready to be confirmed. Once I read the list, council may take one motion to confirm all if there are no further nominations. Board of Family Children Services, Jennifer Melvin; Columbus Aquatics Commission, Brian Abada; Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Fran Flucker; William Billy Kendall; Oz Roberts; Carlos Williams; Orlean Bachman; Anne Retorka; Becky Butts; David Goldberg- Carlos Williams; Orlean Bachman; Anne Retorka; Becky Butts; David Goldberg; Wanda Jenkins; Matt Horn. And for the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, we have Thomas Barron and Esther Radcliffe. We may take one motion to approve all.
Here's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has passed.
Thank you. We have one council district appointment, and Counselor Huff is not here. We have the city manager's appointments that the council may confirm. For the Deferred Compensation Board, he's renominating Dr. Forrest Toley. And for the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, he's nominating Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin for this seat. Both may be confirmed.
Does it move?
Move confirmation? All in favor?
Aye.
Has been moved next.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Tree Board, we have Ms. Beauty Moore. She is interested in serving another term if a member of council wants to reappoint her.
Are we nominated?
Council Allen has made that renomination. We also have Jeremy Cummins and Candace Wayman, and these two seats are open for nomination. And that's all I have.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
Renomination. First, there's a...
And we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. And that's all I have. Madam Counselor.
Okay. Thank you very much. The mayor had asked me that before we go into executive session, if we would ask Ms. Lisa Lee?
Ms. Lee.
Ms. Lee to please come forward to the podium.
Sorry, I have one that was listed on the public agenda for upcoming events. If you want him to...
Sure, go ahead. Yes. One moment, Ms. Lee. We have something else coming up. Go ahead.
Jacoby Howell.
Jacoby Howell. Mr. Jacoby Howell.
Okay, is he available? Mr. Jacoby Howard?
Mr. Jacoby Howell.
Apparently, he's not here. We can ask him to come back.
Yes. Thank you.
In reference to that? Well, we're going to listen to Ms. Lee first, and then we can take. Can someone go see who the other individual is that would like to speak next? Ms. Lee, you can come to the podium now. I know, I just want to get her name, to be polite.
Thank you for letting me come back to make a statement. I would just like to say that in the email that was read from risk management, there's a lot of incorrect statements. The pictures that I provided for you show pictures of the accident. There were no milking signs on both sides of the road or barrels. They were not put up several hours later. And I do under, I work for the Muskogee County School District, Jim Button. I retired after 32 years. 25 of those years, I handled the insurance for the school district. I do know about being self-insured. I do know about attorney fees. We pay Jim Hughes 90 bucks an hour to handle our stuff. I was trying to circumvent the city paying any attorney fees or State Farm paying any additional fees. I was just trying to do what I was told, to let, you know, y'all handle everything first. I'd be glad to let State Farm know that y'all will be in touch with them to take care of the matter. I really appreciate all of your time and listening to this, and I just want to say thank you very much.
You're so welcome, Ms. Lee, and we're so sorry.
Thank you.
You have a great eve. Ma'am, you can come to the podium now. Betty Jo Casey? Casey, okay, with the Spring Gate?
Spring.
Spring, Spring Lake subdivision. HOA. I'm sorry. I was trying to read it.
Ma'am Counselor and the Councilman President and City Manager, we had came before council on an issue we have in the neighborhood and have had ongoing for years, and it is in Spring Lake on 11 Nightwing Court. And we have known that many city individuals have been out to that residence. The mayor had told individuals to get back with us and keep us updated on what is going on, and we have not heard from anyone. Our president, who was here previously, but she had to leave, she was supposed to be gotten in contact with and updated and on the situation, because it has not improved. It's only gotten worse. The neighbors in the neighborhood, you know, are very upset, and it's understandable why. The individual is living in a burned-out hole of a home. I did speak with John Hutchison. He did call me about three weeks ago now and told us that we needed to be present at this meeting, because a certain letter, a third letter was supposed to be given to the individual, but there had been a staff change in his office, and so that didn't happen. But they did go out and hand-deliver the letter to the individual. So, what we're wanting to know is an update on the situation, because the home was scheduled for demolition at the end of this month. So, the neighbors just want to know, and we represent 174 residences, and, you know, people are wanting to know, and we just need to give them an answer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, and I do apologize for the inconvenience. Counselor Davis would like to make a comment in reference to that, and one moment while we turn on his light.
Thank you, Counselor Woodson. Ms. Casey, I just found out some information last week, and I apologize, I was out of town the whole weekend, and I just got back, so I haven't had to address it. Usually, I try to give you an update, so I apologize about that. But I think you're right. It's my understanding, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, okay, but this is my understanding of it, and I don't know if the director, Director Hutchinson, is here or not. The city manager may have some information that could help as well, but I believe that the process, number one, the process had to take place, okay? Legally, the city has to go through a process. The paperwork had to be hand-delivered and put in the hands of the individual. That was done, as far as I understand. The individual, or the homeowner and residents in this case, under the circumstances, is given the opportunity to demolish the property themselves. Everybody in the city, the citizens of Columbus, is afforded that opportunity. That's part of the law, that's part of the process. The city attorney, you can comment on that. But if they are unable to, or if they don't, the city will go in there and do it at the cost of the city and then put a lien on the property. And I believe, the last time you were here, the city was ready, in motion to do that. It's my understanding now that this individual has come back, the property owner has come back and said that they are going to pay to have it cleaned up and demolished. So, that's the, as of right now, that's all I know. That's the decision. I think that if it does not happen in a timely manner, I believe the city will just bypass that decision-making and go in and clean it up and put a lien on the property. But that's all the information that I have at this point. As to what is happening currently on the property, I know the last time you were here, you spoke to the fact that this person was camping out on the property, whether throughout the day or all night, and then there were other issues dealing with health that also needed to be addressed and was a concern to the neighborhood. I'm not sure where that is. I'm not sure how that can be addressed. So, that's all that I know, unless there's somebody here, the city manager, or anybody that can comment on the situation. And they may be able to walk you through a more detailed understanding of how the process works at this point.
And just to give you an update, the homeowner did come in and pull a demolition permit and showed payment, showed verified payment of the demolition. So, I was checking with Director Hutchinson to see if that has been scheduled, but he has contracted directly with a company to have the demolition done. And so, when we get a date, if you'll leave me your number, I'll let you know when that's supposed to happen.
That'll be great. As long as we know something's being done.
For information's sake, as far as the time, the timely manner, how is that handled? I don't think we've ever asked that question for, how it's handled at this point.
I think Ms. Hodg just said that once they get that date, they will convert it to Ms. Casey, so she's aware of it, because at this time, they don't have the date. They have the request in place.
Well, if the permit is drawn, then how much time do we give them to follow through with a course action?
I think typically, a permit's good for six months, but we're not going to allow that to go this long. It was originally scheduled to be on the city attorney's agenda for demolition from the city, so we will follow back up with that, and if it's not completed, we will bring it back and have that handled.
So, you've indicated that the owner pulled the permit and had proof that they had paid a demolition company to demo.
That's correct.
And so, if they have paid the demolition company, I'm sure we can check with that demolition company to see where it is on the schedule, since the payment has already been made.
Will the decision-making be handled out of your office, Mr. City Attorney? I mean, Mr. City Manager.
Well, we want to, I think we need to communicate to the demolition company the urgency. Is it the demolition company that we deal with?
Yes, sir.
Then that's helpful.
Okay.
It's the same company we deal with.
We'll contact the association.
Are you okay, Ms. Casey?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
That's perfect.
Thanks for being patient today. Ms.?
Ma'am? Could you? Go ahead. If you'd like.
Ma'am, I just wanted to thank you, because I know you sat here patiently.
Yes.
Till we went through all of the business, because I kept wondering, I kept looking at my public agenda, and I didn't see where the two individuals had come. Just want to thank you for the tenacity of following up on this issue for the, what did you say, 170?
174 residences are in Spring Lake, and there, so many are involved in this.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I do remember the presentation. I thought, actually had thought, because I had seen something had already been done, but I just want to thank you for the tenacity, because being here and going through all of our agendas, because this is a very serious matter, but we need that, we need citizen involvement, because a lot of times, we need you to come down and say, hey, remember?
What's happening?
And so, I just wanted to say personally, say thank you, ma'am, for what you're doing for your community.
Well, thank you, and all of you who's been involved.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come before council? If not, I move that we go into executive session. Does that have a motion?
To discuss personnel.
To discuss personnel.
Full adjournment.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Please clear the council chamber. Thank you. Thank you very much. We are out of executive session now. There was discussion, personnel discussions, no votes taken. I recognize the city manager at this time.
Thank you, Madam Counselor. Madam Counselor and members of council, I am recommending your consent to remove Mr. John Doorman as Director of the Columbus Civic Center.
Second.
Motion and a second has been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Maybe we do. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We are in this council meeting. Now, just to let you know, we're going to take a 20-minute break, and we will be back for budget session. It is now 12:15, so we should be back by 12:35, 12:40. Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience.